Good evening. I call the Planning Commission meeting to order. It's 6:31 on Thursday, November 15th. We're located here in City Hall in the City Council chambers in Sammamish. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you, public, for coming out to join us tonight. And I will take my roll call and start on my right tonight.
Roshi Novaro.
Eric Brooks.
Shannon Collins.
Rituja Indra.
Mark Baughman.
Jane Garrison.
Okay, there are six commissioners present tonight, which gives us a quorum. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. Second?
Did you want to make a moment?
Oh, that's...oh, sorry. I was thinking meeting minutes. Oops. I would like to add a discussion item to the agenda after the presentations, to discuss the 20th birthday celebration of Sammamish.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to add an item onto the agenda tonight to talk briefly about the 20th birthday party for city of Sammamish. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, we're unanimous that we will add that to the end of the agenda. In fact, we'll do it before new business. So, we'll talk about it right after we hear public comment non-agenda. Okay, very good. And now, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 1st, 2018. It was a regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the minutes are passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone out there tonight who wants to speak on a non-agenda item? No? All agenda items? So, we will have no public comment on a non-agenda item, but I'm sure we'll have plenty for the public comment on the agenda item. So, with that, we'll do the next item of business is the city's 20th birthday celebration. I'll hand it over to Rituja.
Okay. So, the city of Sammamish will be celebrating its 20th birthday in August this year, and I'm very excited because as a resident of Klahani, I think this would be the first time I'll be able to participate in a birthday celebration for our city. So, I'm really looking forward to it. And I feel like celebrations like these bring the community together, and I think that has been said by our city council, you know, even last year when many of us were running for office. I think that is a sentiment that was expressed over and over again, that we need to create a shared experience of community. And I feel like this birthday celebration is a good avenue and a good event to celebrate that. I also think that as a planning commission, you know, it will give us a lot of input into what people are thinking in the community as far as what the vision for our city needs to be. And, you know, that celebration could be, again, another avenue for us to collect that vision. I know in the past, we've, you know, sort of collected time capsules, for example. Kids have written down saying, "Oh, this is what we...how we see the city, you know, 10 years from now, 20 years from now." And that would be something that would be great to see. And what I would like to recommend is that the planning commission join hands with the Parks Commission or the Parks Department in celebrating our city and, you know, inspire conversations. So, what I would like to do is I would like to volunteer, if possible, to start the conversation with Parks Commission on how the planning commission can be involved in the celebration. And then, I'm happy to sort of bring you back the report in our next planning commission meeting and see if we could go on from there.
Okay.
So, do we have to take a...
I'll make a motion. I can make a motion. I move to encourage Commissioner Indupure to join hands with the Parks Commission, reach out, volunteer, and see how the planning commission can get involved with the 20th birthday celebration for Sammamish. Need a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to encourage Commissioner Indupure to work on the 20th birthday celebration. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And it passes unanimously. So, bring us back some information. Okay, so, the second item...or the...yeah, the second item on the agenda tonight is new business. And tonight, it's a presentation on Sammamish zoning, which is really exciting. It's Commissioner Garrison and Commissioner Brooks. They're going to sort of switch roles and turn back into citizens and sit in these chairs right here and give us a presentation on something that both of them have been working really hard on. It's mostly sub-area plans, right? So, we'll be hearing about sub-area plans. We'll have some time to discuss. And then, our job tonight is to decide whether or not they'll go to the city council for a presentation, which I'm sure is fairly obvious to all of us. So, it's not...I just wanted to make it clear that it's not like we're giving you guys like thumbs up or thumbs down tonight, like we like it or we don't. It's more, we want you to go to city council or don't want you to go to city council. So, of course, I want you to go to city council. So, it should be more of an informal kind of fun presentation. So, and I actually spoke with Commissioner Brooks earlier today, and he was hoping to have some discussion and from the public also. So, we'll hear the presentation, we'll take public comment, and then we can sort of reconvene with our comments. I don't know. We'll see how it goes, but I don't want to, you know, have the presentation and then not be able to hear the public speak before we speak. So, we'll see how it goes. Okay?
Commissioner, I just wanted to point out that this is part of the housing strategy that we have worked on, and the sub-area planning is one part of the strategy that we are proposing that the city and the council adopt.
Very true.
So, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you for that. Yes, this would be, I guess, while the city council was discussing the housing strategy, they requested the information from Commissioner Garrison and Commissioner Brooks. And so, instead of asking them to just come to planning commission right...or come to city council right away, they asked to go back to the planning commission so the full planning commission could see the presentation. I forgot to say that Commissioner Crandall is absent tonight. We took roll call, but we didn't specifically say that he's absent, but Commissioner Crandall's in Mexico. So, with that, does staff need to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
No.
Okay. All right.
Yes.
Turn it over to...okay. So, go ahead.
Does the clicker work tonight?
Yes.
Huh. It doesn't bend. There. Can you hear me? Okay. I'd like to thank the commission and the staff for allowing us to present our thoughts tonight. Our thoughts on how we think we can improve our city. We know that growth is contentious. The problem of preserving the environment is easy to face because it's popular. The elephant in the room is population growth because nobody wants it. We have to grow, so a small group of us, all from Sammamish, got together to come up with ideas. I am a retired planner, landscape architect with 49 years on the front lines. Eric Brooks is a practicing architect, and he's up on the latest thinking and trends for green building, sustainability, and climate change. We also worked with Mary Wichter, who supplied a ton of information, background information maps, told us about process, told us about King County before the city was incorporated. We worked with Bill Way, who's a wetlands biologist, and helped us confirm some of the ideas that we had as far as stormwater. He lives down on Lake Sammamish and is very aware of what's going on with the salmon. And Sid Gupta helped us. Sid from the Parks Commission, who walks all over the city, doesn't even have a car, and maintains so much area of our parks and volunteers. So, we think we had a nice, well-rounded group. Sammamish is our town, and we want it to be the best it can be. When my sisters tell me I'm too old to live alone and I need to move home, I say, "I am home. I've been here longer than I've been anywhere else." So, to get started on what's good for Sammamish, we needed to ask ourselves, not what we want, but what do the citizens want? For the answer, we turned to the comprehensive plan. And do we need to say our addresses?
No.
I'm going to turn it over to Eric.
So, as we're all aware...well, thank you, all. Thank you, staff. We're all aware that the comp plan is essentially a culmination of input from the public council outreach groups, planning staff, and planning commission, and this is our guide for the future. The problem...one of the issues is it means slightly different things to everyone. So, there's...we've all got a different kind of vision of what that document means or would lead to. Well, as we know...there we go. So, zoning map, it's a map of what we have currently have for implementation of our comp plan, along with the municipal code. And we ask, you know, how is that working currently and how are people accepting the outcome? And recall that current zoning is based on...is largely inherited from King County zoning, who had...had been working at a much higher...a larger scale, and they painted with a much broader brush, so to speak, with little or no fine-grained consideration. So, it's not that they were trying to do us a disservice or if they were doing a disservice, it's just that they couldn't concentrate as fine-grained as what we're interested in Here, we have a couple aerials, one from 1984, one from 2016. And we can see the contiguous tree canopy and the road networks, which were less developed. And in the...with the 2016, you can see how this broad brush zoning has kind of affected our natural environment. And we see this homogenous layer of single-family homes over the entire land area, kind of showing...not really kind of getting to a lot of this idealism that we have in our comp plan. And no one should take this personally. The entire country is beginning to look like this. And so, in every case, it's really just reflecting the society it serves.
The problem is that the small lot, big house layout does not easily absorb new growth. We think that if we are to overcome the problem, two basic things have to happen. One, we need a common vision for our comp plan. And two, we need a better path to implement it. So, what comprises a good vision? The quality of life desired nationwide and the one described in our comp plan do not differ much. We all want housing balance. We all want trees and open space. We want green building. We want no traffic. And we want financial resilience. We all want that. And it's what our comp plan says, and...but how...but what is the real vision? What do we each think that means? We don't know. Where it's all different. So, why are those goals so unattainable? We all want walkability, but if a place is designed for walking, like Old Issaquah was, like all the old towns were, new development there will be designed for that market. If a place was designed for cars, say like South Center, the new development there will be designed for that market because nobody wants to invest in something that isn't designed for the market. So, we don't get a switchover. It's very hard to change from one to the other. And what often happens is we end up combining both, trying to get there, and we get negative results. So, then, we have to ask ourselves, "Well, why should we even try?" And it seems like such a mountain to climb. And there are three basic reasons that we came up with, and the first was fiscal. I read an article about Sarasota, Florida. It looks just like Sammamish from the air. It's got the same kind of subdivision, small lot, large house. And I found out that it was going to take 42 years to pay off the infrastructure that serves that kind of a development. And the infrastructure isn't even going to last that long. That's a problem. If we can build higher densities and mixed use, we can pay it off in as little as three years. It's a huge difference. Character. We talked about character. We've talked about character before, and we know where our six zoning is leading us. And we...nobody liked it on the commission. Character really matters. And in Sammamish, we are seeing those complaints, not only from outside of the development, but inside, the people who live there. I have heard say, "Well, we're not going to live here very long. It's just temporary for us." Because they don't like it either. Our recent lot size increases are not going to change that character much. We still have curb cuts every few feet, wide driveways, and garage-lined streets that are hard to love. And then, we get to community. Reasons go even...these are reasons that go much deeper than fiscal, sustainability, or character. It goes to a sense of community, knowing that we are part of something bigger than ourselves. With connections, we feel a sense of responsibility for others, resulting in less loneliness, which can be a real killer. Loneliness is...I think I read it was above cancer and heart disease. It's an amazing thing that happens to people. We have less extremism and hatred if we have community. We have more productivity and creativity. We have safer streets and more self-policing. We can bring out the best in people by joining rather than separating. Daniel Harrigus, in the publication Strong Towns, pointed out that the things that make our places strong are thousands of years old. And first on his list was human scale. Our thought was that our massive land area in Sammamish needs to be broken down into human-scaled pieces that could be walkable and have individual identities. If we do that, we can zero in and see what people like in each area and protect it. And see what they don't like and repair it. We could promote balance and interest in each neighborhood if we break it down into smaller bites.
So, of course, the next question was, how do we begin to break it down? And, you know, of course, we have road networks that exist. There's parcels and developments. There's easements, utilities. There's elementary school attendance areas and other schools. There's maybe natural features. And we settled on kind of an empirical and scientific approach based on natural...using natural features as a vehicle for this demonstration. And of those natural features, we chose drainage ways. And the drainage basins themselves were too few and too large, but we liked the creeks and wetlands because they're well-spaced and ubiquitous across Sammamish. And they're features that are highly valued by the community at large. And then, 85% of them lead us to directly to Lake Sammamish, kind of increasing some of these needed pathways east-west. So, we started out with using public available GIS data essentially and creating...using that as an underlay to start mapping out what we could do here. And here, we have on our natural features map, we have our lakes, Yellow Lake in Klahani, Beaver and Pine Lake, Lake Sammamish. And most of our history in the community revolves around lakes, whether it was logging or it was resorts, leisure. We have creeks and ravines that are nicely spaced throughout the city, we can see. And there are many of them, and most...they mostly just disappear into the sea of housing. They don't...you don't really see them when we look at our aerial photography. And then, we have our wetlands. Most of them are big and beautiful and healthy, and many times, they're very visible features as we drive down our roads, and they make up a lot of our natural character. So, then, we looked at, how could you enhance those naturally occurring features? And by widening them. And keep in mind that what we're suggesting here, these...where they're wide and where they're narrow, is just kind of an idea about how things could be modified and made larger, made smaller, depending on local conditions. But it's...you know, we asked ourselves, what other kind of features could one use and make a difference in the way these areas are linked? And there's all kinds of things. Keep in mind, we're trying to keep it simple, simple demonstration. But we could look at natural features, steep slope maps that could inform where these linkages are. We could look at these kind of common spaces that are parts of essentially man-made things, parks and HOA things and that kind of stuff. And then, we could look at our historic sites that are associated with kind of logging and resorts and things like that, shingle mills and the like. And then, you know, existing land use also has some influences on those linkages. And I guess most importantly, it helps create these smaller areas that lend themselves to walkability. And in this particular slide, we can see where these kind of almost kernels start appearing out of the...you know, out of the data, so to speak, to make places where it might make sense to create some neighborhood centers that serve as walkable nuclei, so to speak, for these different kernels without...throughout the town. So, you know, if this could work, this could serve as...or something like this could serve as this kind of common vision. It kind of shows in picture form what we're driving at and helps us inform changes to other documentation that we use as guiding documents.
So, this would...these areas here that you see are approximately 1 to 2 miles across, the areas between these linkages. It's why we like these linkages, because they create these smaller areas that are walkable. And we thought, "That's a wonderful idea. Maybe it could become a common vision that we have in our comp plan." But then, we thought, "Well, how would you ever implement that? What would you have to do to get that going in our process?" So, we realize that this is a finer texture than our present zoning map, which just is really a broad brush of R4 and R6. This would give us maybe the opportunity to develop some finer textured uses. So, we have tools that we can use, but we need to use the right ones. And people use height and density extensively, and they do it because it's easy to measure. We all hate the D-word because it's threatening. It means more traffic. We know one person more equals one more car. That's what we think anyway, and that's probably pretty close. But we need to think about the type of traffic rather than just traffic and promote regulation that supports walkability and transit. We do that by not segregating land use, but instead by creating clustered uses at human scale to walk to. That helps reduce traffic in the dreaded parking lot environment. It turns out that height and density don't impact quality of life nearly as much as traffic. So, maybe we shouldn't react so strongly when we hear those terms, "height" and "density." For conceptual purposes only, we took a neighborhood as an example. This could be a neighborhood anywhere, but we liked this one because it had arterials and it had local access streets. It had lakes and it had wetlands. It had the R4 and the R6 zoning. But this is what all we used. We did not use more scientific data, which we certainly have. Our existing mapping, and you can ask Mary Wichter, gives us a much, much more information to develop a fine-grained zoning plan than we used to do what we did next. I'll let Eric explain that.
Right. So, we've touched on these different kind of opportunities to pull out...to use different data sets, I guess one could say. And we selected a small data set just because of what we were trying to prove here. But one could quickly see how, using GIS technology, data sets numbering in the dozens could be layered on top of each other and start to reveal things that might be a good idea to do or directions to go. So, in this concept drawing, we have represented different types of roads and their classification. We have arterials, the heavy wide line, and a little bit narrower heavy line is kind of the collectors and dash lines are more local roads. And then, you have some historical sites. We have the green linkage, so you can see the light green around the top, around the water bodies and wetlands are kind of relate back to the previous slide that shows the green linkages kind of throughout the city. We have, as I mentioned, the natural features in wetlands, lakes, and tree canopies. And the existing land use is being considered as well, as far as the housing and the parks and things like that. So, the proposed zoning in this case, we have the green linkage that are essentially surrounding areas that are high-value, nature value, natural services type of things. And we have our forest canopy on existing large lots that could be used as opportunities for receiving sites for canopy, these areas of canopy that have been recognized as needing a little bit of repair, so that could be done there. We have the dark green as arterial buffers that we've had discussions in planning commission over the last couple of years about how those types of roads and those types of buffers are... about how those types of roads and those types of buffers are highly valued and desired. We have open space and neighborhood linkages. So we're able to link these kind of kernels with the neighboring kernels. Maybe there's a handful of these kernels that all go into one school or something like that, all kind of within walkable distance. ADUs, we've talked about, they could be allowed in certain areas that fit well with existing neighborhood character, worked well with tree canopy retention and all these other types of things. But it would be an opportunity, it'd be, instead of saying ADUs are permitted anywhere throughout the city, you select those sites that are more, that lend themselves more to an ADU, I guess. And then we could have higher density areas like the darker brown in the middle where you have some mixed use and some services. Maybe you have a depot there, that's where the Amazon drop-off is. Or you have a little copy center or you have, there's a lot of people working out of their homes. Maybe there's a place where you can have a little conference room that you can rent for an hour or two and meet with clients or whatever, you know, that type of thing. Or maybe there's a hub there where you walk to and you get on a bus that takes you to Town Center or some other transit station that gets you to the city. And then, of course, just identifying places to preserve the trees and areas that have good soil, older homes for fixer-uppers. These types of things kind of meet some of our housing needs. And we know, one reason that we decided to keep this like kind of a no-faceless kind of neighborhood is that the first step's always difficult, kind of drawing these lines, because those lines are always going to go through someone's property and that person's going to, you know, take it differently than maybe the community at large might. So that's kind of the big kind of cell that has to happen. You know, I mean, so rather than doing that, you know, we can map these areas using kind of just empirical data and allow that to kind of reveal where the good places to build are. There's a lot of, corporate world is using data visualization as a way of making new discoveries. And I think that we could apply that thinking to what we're trying to do here. It's a multi-layered, it's a complex thing. Complexity comes from layering simple things. And that's, you know, what I think a lot of people love about these thousand-year-old cities and these types of things, because it was not, it just didn't happen overnight. It happened over time. So, I guess we could look for underutilized infrastructure. We could look for areas of high turnover and slow sales rates, areas of poor tree canopy and data such as housing age and values and then other areas that are easily reachable by transit or shuttle. The city could promote incremental development in appropriate areas. I think we heard David Pyle speak to that a little bit, you know, kind of waiting till these areas are ripe for development instead of just doing it because it's, somebody has come to the counter to develop it. Developing a fine-grained zoning could really encourage certain single-family homes to become duplexes and triplexes. I do work in the city of Seattle and it's really kind of neat sometimes to look in these older communities and you see single-family houses and you'll see one that really looks no different than that, but it's obviously a duplex, got two front doors. And it's just kind of a way to kind of increase some density without really blowing the character up of the neighborhood. Small apartment buildings, eight to 12 units. Mom and pop stores, cafes and owner-occupied type of live-work units that may not require any additional parking. Condos for seniors who want to stay here, this kind of, this cycles of life mobility to stay in the city. Daycare operations and packaging grocery delivery centers and unique uses proposed by individual neighborhoods and things that we haven't even thought of yet.
So, I think I would like to see, I don't like to just go clear to the end without saying if, does anybody have any questions or anything right now? And then I'll finish up. You can finish up. Should we just proceed and go right on ahead to the end? Okay, walkability sounds idealistic and it probably was a few years ago. But with new trends, including the influx of well-educated immigrants, the pendulum is starting to swing towards stronger communities and small startups. Other trends are positive and in our favor. Increased transit and shuttle possibilities, less dependence on cars and their unpopularity among millennials, more telecommunications, needs for downsizing, a desire for walkable schools, problems for deliveries which are becoming common, and a new basis for retail. Those things are changing the way we live, perhaps making walkable developments more feasible in the future. Neighborhood meetings are necessary to facilitate changes. There are some negative issues because there are growing pains. We are lucky to have neighboring cities that have tried to change and have goofed up. So we can look at them and say, we don't want to do that. A common mistake that's been made by cities is they're trying to get the best of both worlds by lining the streets with walkable retail while hiding the parking behind. We end up with a bad combination, too much retail, shuttered street-side doors and a poorly planned, car-oriented development. It's neither one. And it's called the Texas Donut, which I think is just hilarious. And if you can imagine how a developer would go in and go around a block and put those retail stores around the edge. And many times they do it because the city wants the walkable image. But the banks won't finance it in suburbia, so they have to have the parking. And that's a problem. The Texas Donut is bad. Then we all remember and know about the houses in Seattle, where they went into the old Craftsman neighborhoods in Seattle. Those neighborhoods were beautiful. They were touted in architectural classes across the country as the best neighborhoods there were in the whole country. And Seattle aggressively forced changes that destroyed privacy, light and livability, directly impacting the local quality of life. And it's, so height and density got a bad rap with those kinds of installations. And it's too bad because if they had used it right, they probably could have pulled it off. For example, what we're talking about here, the eight-to-12 unit apartment building, away from those houses, down on the corner, down away, not right next door where you look down at somebody trying to sunbathe in their backyard. Then there's bank financing problems. Financing for walkable developments can be difficult. And I have a couple of examples that I know of that aren't really very neighborhood scale-related, but I'm thinking of Issaquah Highlands. And I'm thinking of the Fred Meyer Home Depot development down there. We hated those when they went in. We tried so hard to get walkable developments in there. What we wanted was, we wanted parking under, mixed use on top of the parking and then residential above. And the banks said no. And they said that for Issaquah Highlands, they said that down at Home Depot. So we weren't able to get them. And what we are thinking is that we need to have the density of population to support those kinds of developments, if that's what we want, to support walkability, if that's what we want. We've got to get the numbers up. And that's so hard because we're afraid of numbers. We think that small-scale growth and incremental growth won't be impacted as much as a single project growth, but it's something to keep in mind.
We see the small neighborhoods working with Town Center and the other major centers not in opposition to them. For one thing, the timing and locations are just, they're just very different. We're talking about establishing something out, you know, two decades, three decades. It's amazing, we're talking about 20-year birthday party. And, you know, 20 years goes by pretty quickly. So if we can, the next 20 years could get us a long ways down the road to where we want to go if we map out where we want to go. Revitalized neighborhoods represent change over a long period of time. We don't know, it's incremental and changing. So as we learn new information, you know, as a Town Center comes online, QFC and Safeway Centers start, you know, increasing their density. They'll need to be, you know, those are things that have to be more project-oriented. They're kind of more here and now versus some of the other areas we're talking about. And so one type supports the other. If you want an old, successful example, think of Main Street Living, side-by-side with all the little corner grocery stores. They serve, they just serve different functions. In conclusion, what we've shown you this evening is a way that we can support our comp plan by developing a common vision and path to implementation.
Do you have another slide?
There we go. We can read it off. We can read it right off of there. There you go. So, we know we need to grow to pay for upkeep and services as well. Let's take our fair share of growth over time. And we can make the job easier by breaking down the large city area into smaller bites, walkable neighborhoods. And if we do, we can preserve what people like and repair what they don't. We can add people without adding cars. We can build sustainable, sensitive and mixed-use residential areas. We can build where infrastructure is underutilized currently. We can create human-scale communities that build care and respect. Support open space by not increasing density in sensitive areas. We can utilize tools through TDRs, donations and purchases and provide trails and linkage systems as we promote mass transit and provide affordable new housing and preserve older housing stock. We can grow incrementally, changing to meet the trends that are sure to change as time goes on. And we can save large, effective areas that offset global warming, work with stormwater and allow for a contiguous tree canopy. Anything else?
And we think that if we get started, our city could have an amazing, sustainable quality of life that works in depth for all of us for a long time.
Thank you both. That was excellent. I'll open it up for questions.
I have a question. I really liked the presentation, I think. It's, I think we're at a point in our city where it's time for kind of a new vision, a newer, more up-to-date vision of where we think we're going for the next 20 years. And I certainly think with our 20th birthday coming up, it's the ideal time to start that conversation and to bring in all the people who've moved here in the last 20 years, those of us who've been here longer than 20 years, but people who've been here five and 10 and seven years, to get their ideas and get them involved. So I love the presentation. My question would be, because, and I love that you talk about taking smaller bites and kind of working on that. What do you think if we all can, as a city came and said, we love this, we want to do this, let's get started, what do you think is the very next right move we should do? If we were to take this plan and go, yes, Jane, go for it.
I think staff is overloaded and I don't think it's something you can do in-house. I think you would have to hire a very high-quality urban design firm to carry this out. It's very complicated. And when you look at all the information that you would want to have to put this together, it's just a mountain of past information. And probably we'd have to gather more than we even have now. So I think that would be the next thing that we would have to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, and I think that much the same way we collected information on our trees, our canopy, that would be one of these data sets, one of these layers. It's too bad that the presentation electronic because normally it's done with trace paper and it's literally these transparent, semi-transparent layers that get layered on. And it's kind of, there's a message in that all by itself in what we're proposing. And so, the housing and what people want, Mr. Stickney's been talking about, we need to understand what people want for housing, you know, what their wants and needs and all these kind of things. That's another layer that could be added on. So, you know, Jane, it is a complex, I maybe disagree, but it's complicated. It's complex and just all this kind of simple stuff. So it does, it would take someone to have some experience with that. And it would take the community to kind of decide on what data sets they wanted to have included in this type of thing. So there'd be some kind of getting ducks in a row. But I'm certainly excited about the potential, that's for sure.
I think that's something in a way that we've been missing. At least I know when I came to Sammamish, well, 18 years ago, I kept in my naivety, not knowing how a city worked or how things are done, but I kind of thought, oh, great, we're a city now. At some point, there's going to be like a model representation of what we're going to look like, like a physical scaled version, you know, like, you know, with little wooden trees and little wooden cars on the roads. And I could say, oh, this is what we're going to look like. This is where, this is the vision. And I, you know, I've been waiting in a way for that. And I know that's a highly complex, you know, concept. But I think in a lot of ways, that would help a lot of our city kind of think, oh, this is the direction we're going in, or this is the proposal. I saw a brief clip of city council meeting with the Parks Commission and they were talking about the Green Spine. And they had now granted it was the contractor's visual representation of what they thought the Green Spine would look like. But even to see that was kind of, oh, I get it. I see the longer, the vision. Because a lot of the time, I think we're talking very abstractly and we don't really know what we're talking about. When we talk about traffic and we talk about development, we talk about population growth, we still don't have a visual representation of what we're talking about because it means different things to everyone. And we start conjuring up images to ourselves of what that must mean. So I think we've been missing that type of thing, although I know that's a difficult thing to come up with. But I think at some point, we do need something like that.
Thanks for doing that. I think it's kind of interesting, I was writing some questions down as you went and you actually answered quite a few of them, so that's usually a good sign. One of the things I struggled a little bit with is maybe a similar echoing some of the comments is that this is pretty high level. And I'm wondering, what, can you articulate a little bit about, what does this look like when it's successfully implemented? So what, you know, what would we see? And I mean, I have a guess, but it's fairly new to me, so my guess may be completely off. What would people experience 25 years from now if we were successful in this?
Well, I would hope that you would have less complaints about losing neighborhood character. character. I think that it would give an opportunity to establish a neighborhood character on a much finer grain, because there's not a single character in the, in the city, in my opinion, anyway. It really depends on where you're traveling, and there can be dramatically different neighborhood characters. And so each of these kind of kernels could have a group of citizens that live within there that could help influence what their neighborhood character, what direction it went, right? So I could see kind of almost these different rooms, so to speak, these different kind of, as you travel through the city, you just, you can tell you're in such-and-such borough or, you know, whatever the technical term, or the term would be, but that's kind of...
Neighborhood.
Right. Right. And, and, and having it, having a system in place that allows for feedback loops. So as new information comes along, we learn, we're always learning stuff, and as we learn new stuff, we can, we can change it up, we can tweak it, we can modify it, and allow it to serve the, you know, serve the people it's serving.
I think the interesting thing to me is if you travel in some, particularly in Seattle, and you see some of this sort of thing that's been done in different ways, and some parts of it work pretty well, and some parts, parts of it don't work at all. I can't remember what neighborhood I was in, but, you know, they, they had created the commercial space along four or five blocks in a straight line, and what that, and it was all great stuff, right? Small coffee shops and restaurants and a little grocery store. But what it did was, it jammed up the neighborhoods all around that with cars trying to park, because we still can't let go of those cars, and the people that travel to that neighborhood for that restaurant or whatever, they still try to park. And so it's really nice on one hand, but they didn't really solve the problem, because now all the cars are still coming there and ruining the neighborhood to some extent. So I think that it, you know, there's different ways to do it in a straight line. Do you create just one single spot? How do you restrict lots of traffic from coming in there? I just, I'm trying to envision how we, as a community, could do it differently than many, many of the places that you can see now. It didn't work very well. At the same time, which was one of my other questions, how do we try to make sure we anticipate technology changes as part of this? Because there's a lot of things that are going to affect what you're talking about. I mean, there's obvious things like how much people actually own cars and keep cars will change, but if you, if you go to Seattle now, there's green bikes everywhere, and Seattle doesn't allow it, but many other cities are littered with little green scooters everywhere, and people are getting around all over the place. And on the one hand, it's, it's a tremendous benefit for mobility and for not using your car or an Uber. On the other hand, it creates an environment where you have visual trash everywhere. So those kind of technology changes are going to come to Sammamish, too, and how we kind of try to anticipate some of that and adapt to it as part of this will be really, I think, very critical.
I read an interesting article about that, and this guy that writes for Strong Towns talked about it, and he said that even if we create a beautiful, walkable project, there will be no reduction in traffic the first day, or maybe not even in five years. Our decision not to own a car is not based on our buildings, our streets, or even our neighborhoods. We give up our cars when the costs outweigh the benefits. So for a while, we get the worst of both worlds. We have to get over that hump. We get the worst of city living with crowds, noise, and lack of greenery, and the worst of suburban living with chronic traffic congestion and dangerous, unpleasant walking conditions. I thought, "Oh, my word, this is terrible. Why are we going to get through this?" But you have to go through this phase to get to where you want to get in the long run. And I felt, I felt bad about that. You've got to pay for it. I feel like Redmond's in the, in the, in that phase, and I feel like parts of Seattle are in that phase. And someday, they're going to be ahead, they're going to be through it. And we still got to, even, we've got to think about starting it. We haven't even thought about it. But the mistake that I don't want to see us make is trying to do this Texas donut, see us trying to create this image of walkability and then back it up with parking. We've got to get rid of that parking and force, start to force people to want to get rid of their cars, start to make it inconvenient. There is, and we know it's inconvenient. I, I won't drive in Seattle, I hate it. They're going to put tolls on the streets. It's a terrible thing, but you can see what they're doing. They're making it inconvenient. And they're going to get rid of people's cars. There's a, there's a little town in Florida, and I, I hate to bring up Florida because it's kind of the opposite of here, so I think it's a bad example, but it's called Babcock Ranch, and they started it up, it's to be a green town. They have some wonderful things. They have rain gardens along all the roads to, to take off the water and filter it before it gets to the groundwater, into the groundwater or into the lakes. It's filtered right away as it goes off the roads. And they look beautiful. They don't look like great big ditches that just dump pollution right on down the hill, but they, so they have some wonderful ideas. But they started a while ago, and they said everybody that moved in had two cars. After 10 years, everybody had one car. They got rid of one. And shortly after that, they got rid of both cars. And they can go anywhere they want on, on these driverless electric shuttles that they call up with an app, to come right to their door, take them wherever they want to go. They can get to mass transit, but to have that car, that insurance, and pay for that, and not use it enough is not to people's liking. They give it up eventually. I thought that was really interesting, because it's kind of a suburban place, and they managed to get through the, the car thing.
Right, and I think it's the incremental aspect that is real key here, because, you know, Mark, you brought up a point, you go in and just zone the land in these areas, and then they're just kind of built out really quickly, then suddenly you end up with shuttered storefronts. You, you don't have the qualities that you're looking for yet. If you have that zoning set up, and it's determined that there's enough kind of critical mass built up in that kernel to then suddenly put in a, something that's more along those lines, there's enough internal support for that, then it gets done. It's not done with hopes of there'll be some internal support. How that's governed, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's another one of my questions, is who gets to decide a lot of this stuff? Because I think the practical reality we, as a commission, see all the time, is that there's very few citizens that take an interest in some of these kinds of issues. And so when you have a neighborhood or a sub-area, whatever you want to call it, who gets to decide? Because it could certainly turn out to be the very small minority who take an interest. And, you know, there's, there's some political aspect to that that could be pretty challenging, I think, when you look at the makeup of the city.
I think we need strong leadership to do it. It's not a grassroots thing, I don't think, to, to do the initial planning.
I agree.
So Jane and Eric, thanks for the presentation. I had the privilege of looking at the maps in person, so I would highly recommend that if you haven't had that chance, please do look, they're beautiful maps, and that is Jane's handwriting on those maps, so it's, I...
It's amazing.
It's amazing, yes. So thank you again for putting so much work in, also to your extended team, which has put in a lot of work into this. Do you see right now, you know, with whatever projects that are going on in the city, where you can right away influence the planning of that with the sub-area planning as you have defined?
I'm not understanding, do we see how we could influence other projects?
I think Eric has an answer for that.
Okay.
Well, I, when you ask, I think that there, a lot of these things that we're talking about, this approach that we're talking about, could be applied to, to, to Town Center, I suppose, as we open up this Town Center and think a little more about how we want to do that. We could, we could add in some of these layers of what we're, we're speaking, and I think there's, many of those layers are being already considered, right? But I think since the, the last Town Center plan was, was developed, there wasn't as much recognition of the importance of the tree canopy for, you know, stormwater management and things like that. So, you know, it's really, I think that it's just, it's just kind of opening up the books to the data and just start pulling data in and see what it tells us. That's, but I do think that it could be applied to other areas that are more immediate.
And I also think there are some parts in the city which have older homes, but, you know, spaces being made for newer, more denser homes, and that also gives an opportunity to at least bring up some concepts of this. And I think one of the maps that had really stood out for me was especially the one where you have, and I think I compared it to a lace, a green lace, where it's all the interconnecting, the one before this, I think. Yeah, this one, where you're showing how all the open spaces can be connected through this green path, and I think this visually was very attractive and very, you know, this, this can be achieved, right? So I think in the presentation, there's so many layers, like you said, you know, there's one filter after the other, and even if we can't get to the complete picture, I think we have a great opportunity, for example, you know, working on our urban forest plan, to get to this kind of image, where we can start connecting our, our lands and our trees to and create that kind of pathway.
Right, and over time, I've seen the development, let's say, developments coming in on a lot along Pine Lake, and they're going to take a historical lot, and they're going to break it up and put several homes on it. Well, if we had something like this in place, we could ask that they provide some kind of linkage across the waterfront.
Like an easement.
Eventually, over time, you would end up being able to walk the entire perimeter of the lake. It might not be 50 years until that can be completely done, but, you know, over time, it would happen.
I think my thoughts on a project, on a project such as Town Center, is that there's a big difference between Town Center, maybe, I think there's a bigger difference than Eric does, I'm not sure, but between Town Center and the neighborhoods, because Town Center will be more project-oriented, and the neighborhoods are incremental growth-oriented. The neighborhoods can go on for hundreds of years with changes as they go, but the Town Center's going to be a project. And although we support it completely, and we think that it, it enhances the neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods enhance it, we think they all go together, I think there is a difference.
I do, too. I feel like Town Center has already been created in this vision in some ways. It's kind of maybe like the first project, actually. It's our first sub-area plan rather than, rather than something we need to work on, right?
Exciting opportunity to...
Kind of see how it works.
To see how it works, and, because that's really one of these, these feedback loops. I mean, there's, you're always going to have some failures in everything you try, and bringing those failures back and informing the next try is pretty powerful. And I get the feeling sometimes that we're hamstrung by not having that ability, and if there's some way to get stuff figured out to where that could happen, I think it'd be powerful, too.
I just think about an article in the newspaper about, about a year ago, and they were talking about this man, was trying to decide on the city that would be the best place for him and his family to live, and he was looking at London and Paris and Amsterdam, that type of thing. And he was putting forward this notion of the popsicle test. And the popsicle test was, how could his son leave their house, get on his bike, and cycle to the local shop, buy his popsicle, and be home before it melted? And that would tell him that this was a good place to live. So he could either ride his bike or walk, and then he thought, "Yeah, that's the kind of place where I want to..."
I like that guy.
Yeah, yeah. So I thought that, like, the popsicle test, I think that that's, and, you know, and if we apply that to Sammamish, what would we come up with? You know, would our popsicle last that long?
No.
Probably not.
Not even close.
Yeah, not in my neighborhood. Unless my neighbors were selling popsicles. I also want to say thank you for the presentation, and then I also appreciated getting to see the real maps. So I'm sure Council will all be able to see the real maps at some time.
Could I ask a question of you? What, what could we improve on here to, when we go to Council? What was not clear, or was it too recited or something?
No, not at all. What I appreciate the most is that it's a vision, and that's how I would present it, is as a vision, because that's what we need. We don't need sort of the practical part of it yet. That's my opinion, at least. You know, that's what the consultant would come up with if you hired a urban design firm, that's what, that would be their job. I like how you have the, the slide that could be a neighborhood in Sammamish, but it's not really a neighborhood in Sammamish. I think that helps, because it helps open your mind. It's not like, "Oh, that's my house, that's my road, that's my this, that's my park." It's, oh, it's that, I could see my neighborhood like that, but it's not my neighborhood. So I think that's really helpful.
It helps that you're a conceptual thinker, then, and I think some people aren't, and that's...
That's true.
That's going to, that could be a problem.
That's true.
I think maybe if you have your actual maps with you, too, if they were on a table somewhere here, where they could actually look at it and see the layers, on top of the layers, and, you know, for people like me who like to see that, I think that would be useful, too, for them to see how, all the different, and all the trouble you've gone to putting these together.
Yeah, you could just have a table out here, and then you could add layers as they come.
Yeah, yeah, so they could actually see. I think that might be beneficial, too.
Thank you.
So I am less of a smart, high-level thinker than you two are, but, and I don't know if this is a good suggestion or not, but I just suggest you consider playing a little bit of defense, too, because a lot of what you're talking about is going to be very difficult for people to hear what you're saying, because their reactions will be so negative. And I think that a big part of it is, if you can get people to open their ears and their minds and listen and think about it, then they're much more likely to digest what you're proposing and suggesting and, and, and give it due consideration. And I'm not exactly sure how you do that, but there will be people who are very set on no-growth period, and I don't ever want to hear about the word "growth," and, you know, maybe you can't get through to them, but there's gradients of that, too. And so if you do things like perhaps emphasizing the time scale a bit more, so that people recognize you're not talking about adding cars to the roads tomorrow, and whether we even have cars driving around in 25 or 50 years, I don't know, that might help people to say, "Okay, well, this isn't, this isn't going to ruin my neighborhood until my kids get out of school," sort of thing. I just think that the key to these kinds of high-level changes and acceptance within the community is getting people willing to think about it in a dispassionate, neutral way. And that's a hard thing when you talk about these topics with a lot of people in the city, including frankly, some in leadership roles. And so, you know, sometimes playing defense isn't a good idea, because you want to just stand on your, the merits of your argument. But I think that if you can somehow find a way to get people to get past their built-in concerns about what's going to happen next month and next year, and, and maybe suggest, you know, what, what it might be like for them to be able to walk 10 minutes and get a cup of coffee on a Saturday morning, provide some of that tactile visualization to make it a little bit more personal, they might open their minds and actually listen to what you have to say. A big part of this is just getting people to hear your message, so you might have to do some more to make that happen.
Right.
That's so... That's so hard.
What I, what I think actually helps, Jane, is when you are so open and honest about the things that are wrong and the things that could go wrong. I mean, just when you talk and you say, traffic is horrible, and, oh, you said something else that was really, that I really liked. Oh, when you just, when you talked about population, I feel like the population, now I'm blanking on this word, but the future, just the future population of the Puget Sound area in general, I feel like is something that gets left out of the conversation.
Oh.
All the time.
Right, well, that's.
Because it's, it's like the, the new population numbers are the, I just can't, like, the, the projections, like, the demographic projections for the Puget Sound area and how we're expected to grow, like, millions in 20 years, right?
Um, actually, that's 1.8 million by 2050.
I feel that really gets left out of the conversation. And then you talk about finances and traffic, and it's like, how are they linked? It's like, our city really can't afford to build our way out of our traffic problem. We just can't, because it's, they're just too expensive, right? You look at California, they've got like 20-lane freeways, right? That's, we just, it's not affordable, it's not practical.
We have an acute housing problem.
Right.
You know, if you're looking at, is it Paradise in California right now that's been burnt to the ground? And that county lost 10% of its housing stock, and there's nowhere for them to go, because they're at max. In fact, California's at max, and there's nowhere to house people who've lost their homes. So we have an acute housing issue.
Right.
That we're not looking at either.
That's true.
Yeah.
So it's like, the housing and the traffic and the finances, it's.
Yeah, all go together.
We have to find another way to get people around the area instead of cars. There's really no, there's really no choice. I, I just feel like there has to, if, if we don't build five-lane, five-lane arterials in all directions, there's always going to have this, this traffic issue. So it's either do that or figure out how to do mass transit and have people walk around. So, I don't know, those are just my thoughts on it. But I think just your candidness in admitting some of the things that are problems helps sort of bring people off their guard and say, hey, they're acknowledging that these are issues, they're not saying these issues don't exist, they're just saying that this is just an idea of how we might address some of those issues, it's not the answer. I think that helps.
And I think highlighting transit, because I think transit does play, you know, when you show your subarea map and the examples that you were giving, Jane, about, you know, the Florida, what is that name, Papcar Ranch? How, you know, different transit options actually help people reduce traffic? So it could be app-based transportation or mass transit, you know, what was it that actually helped? And how was subarea planning crucial to getting those kind of services? So I think that is also something that if you can highlight as part of the presentation. And then, like I said, you know, since there's so many layers, I think it, it, it was clear to me that, you know, you can't do all of this at once. Right now, we don't have, you know, other than the Town Center, which is going to go through a huge development, how do we, I think, because that might be a question that might come up, is that, okay, you're proposing this, but how does this happen?
Have you divided it up?
Right, how do you, yeah, how do you divide it? How do you get started? Where do you start making changes if you have to make changes? And I think that's why it's Mark's, you know, suggestion, that, you know, make sure that you say this is a vision, you know, this is not your, this is not the draft, or this is not a plan which you're going to implement right away, but this is something that we should vision out. And the, the thing that comes to my mind is, you know, just the Safran Shopping Complex, for example, there, you know, when school starts, we hear so many stories of, oh, kids trying to cross the road and, you know, just running around, and, or, you know, just, it's being really unsafe. And I always think that area, for me, is almost like a subarea, and had we given more thought into it to say, oh, there's a school nearby, there's a shopping complex, kids are going to walk across, there used to be a library, you know, how does this work together as an ecosystem, right? How does it work as a subarea, given, you know, your vision that you have? I think taking maybe, you know, that example, too, and building it up to say, how can we do it differently next time around? I think that that might be more helpful as well.
You know, we, I did kind of quietly, I guess, without anybody else, I sneakily looked at the different sites to see if I could solve some of those issues. And it's really hard. And as far as Town Center's concerned, I really would like a stronger vision for that. I, I think there's a danger, and if they cap it, cap the population and the density too low, we may get the Texas donut. I don't want that. I want enough of a walkable environment there that it's going to go into the future. I don't want it to fail. I think it needs to be a, a super success. It needs to be walkable. And people need to go through that hump of difficulty to make it happen. And to, to say we need to hire an urban design firm, a quality one, people who know what they're doing, I'm impressed by what I'm seeing in Redmond, even though I know it's in a horrible stage, and it's, some of it just blows your mind with, with the traffic and even, even how it looks. But I think we ought to look at those people. How did they get to that? We ought to look at how they did it. We ought to be looking at ways to get through this, so we can get on to the next stage, get over that hump. And if, to say that, is that good enough? Or do we need more, more backup, more of a way to get started to, do you have ideas on how to get started?
Well, I was just thinking, maybe that's the whole thing, is that we need to ask that it be a priority that we spend some time and money visioning, right? Like, maybe it doesn't have to be this vision specifically, I mean, we can use this vision as something to get started, but maybe that's where we start, is that we need to spend some time and priority on the visioning period.
Yeah.
Right, this is the first time in four years that we've kind of sat around, and, or for me, the four years that we've sort of sat around and just talked about some of these issues, right?
Right.
We actually set aside time to do something like this. So that's what I mean, it's, it could be as simple as just saying that.
Yeah. And Jane's right, this is difficult. This is hard. And I, I thought exactly the same thing that Jane was saying, that we are witnessing growing pains. This, that's why this is hard, letting go of the past and figuring out what's the future. We used to be a little horse farm town, but now what are we going to be? And, and so this is really difficult, and it is really painful, and we have very, you know, very different views on where we're going, but I think we need that. And I go back to that kind of visual thing that I seem to think about what the city, like, I always imagined I would walk into City Hall and I would see something there at the front, you know what I mean? At least, it's kind of like, this is what we're going to look like, right, in 50 years or something, you know? That I just feel like, in a way, to communicate that vision to the greater public, who, like Mark was saying, don't come to the meetings, don't, you know, are not sitting home on a Thursday night watching Channel 21. I mean, you know, what could be more entertaining than Channel 21? But the odd time to come to City Hall for a passport application or whatever it might be, that they would see something in the center then kind of go, oh, that's what that is? Oh, that's interesting. Or, you know, and that there would be, you know, this is very simplistic, but like, a suggestion box or something to kind of say, oh, I, I really like this, or no, I think this is terrible idea, or, but I just think that we, we kind of miss, we are missing something in communicating the wider vision, as you were talking about, to the greater public, who don't come to our meetings and, and watch all our very interesting television. Yeah.
I think that can be part of the 20th birthday celebration. Maybe we give everybody a visioning board, and little cutouts from magazines and have them develop their perfect city.
Sounds great to me.
Well, I think that the, the thing that hit me, and it was not long ago, I talked to Doug, and, you know, you hit, you get these realizations, and it's kind of like an epiphany, and it's like, oh, okay. And it's really is that growth, it really is, the, the growth numbers are going to keep ratcheting up over the next decades. And we can either drive the bus or be driven by the bus, I guess you could say, we can either kind of come up with a storage system.
Probably driven over by the bus.
Come up with a storage system for all these people and have it all worked out, so that you're going to go here, and you go, you want this kind of house, you'll go here, you know, we can figure that out. I think that's what kind of was the catalyst for me to thinking, all right, well, it's common, so let's just accept the facts and do the best we can with it. And I think this is our opportunity to do that. And I think that, you know, the magic Jane brings to this, you know, the, I think a lot of things we're talking about are, a lot of them, these things are kind of operating under the surface, right? And when, you know, when you have years of landscaping, landscape architecture experience, any, any of these kind of professions, you, through education and experience, you become more sensitive to these things that are for other people, maybe going below the surface. And I think that she helped me see that this is something that, that we needed, because I've been struggling since I've been on Planning Commission with, with providing input for these things we're being asked to provide input for. But as a designer, whenever we're, when I'm being asked to do something, it's always, every action you're, you do is, is meant to support some central thing you're trying to do. And that was, that's the thing that we're missing here, it's like, we're asked to do this or that, but what is it reinforcing? And that has been left undetermined, in my mind, up to this point, and still remains so. But this, this, that's what's so exciting about this, is it's finally kind of getting me into some familiar process that I think that we're missing.
I think a good example of, of what Eric's talking about is when we didn't have a clue about the vision for Town Center, but we were asked to determine how big the letters should be on the signs. And, and that, we spent a meeting on that of, and we're going, what? And we're all trying to guess, but we don't, we don't have the vision. So that's an example of what he's trying to say, I think.
That's true.
Another comment I was going to add, thinking about how this gets presented, as I was sitting here thinking about it, helps me to, and you guys touched on this, but maybe make it a little bit more concrete. What, what I think we struggle to have a vision of is that cities have kind of a life, sort of, and we're in a phase right now where we are struggling a lot with the build-out of the city of Samamish. But despite all the hoo-ha and energy that's being put into that, the, the fact is, just by the numbers, that phase is starting to come to an end. And people don't like the fact they're still going to be developing, big, large-scale developments, but at some point, there's no more large-scale developments to do because the land has been used. And that might be top 10 years, or it might be 15 years, but what you're talking about is the next stage of the life of the city of Samamish. And so really, all of this fuss that we're dealing with now about what it looks like and these big developments being a scar on our city and the traffic that it creates, we're very focused on our current problem and not necessarily thinking about the next phase of, of the place we live. And that's what you're talking about. And so to me, if you, if you describe it as a timeline that gets people thinking about the problems we're worried about are current problems, and the problems you're talking about are future problems, and then there's some phase after that, and some phase after that, and those are less important to us now, but if we think of it as, we're going to have a whole new set of things we need to deal with, and if we're going to be responsible leaders in the community, then we need to establish something for the people that will come in that next phase and have to figure out what's going to happen with the city of Samamish and the citizens who are going to live here. So if you can kind of describe the way that that's separated a little bit, I mean, there's no clean lines on any of this stuff, but really, a lot of the problems that people are going to get their backs up about, when you talk about this, are not necessarily problems that will even exist by the time some of this comes to pass.
Good points, we really appreciate it.
Okay, should we hear from the public? I guess, let's vote first, because I'm guessing we all want to go to council, so I'll make a motion. I move to recommend that Samamish residents Jane Garrison and Eric Brooks present their vision of neighborhood subarea planning to the City Council on December 3, 2018.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any deliberation?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion carries unanimously. So you'll be going to City Council in a few weeks.
Should we come back now to hear the people?
I think so, yeah, that's right, okay. So the first person on the list to speak tonight is Sid Gupta. Oh, no?
No comment today.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you said no, you just said you're here.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Stickney.
Good evening. I'm going to chat about three things tonight, some comments on the excellent presentation given this evening, and sharing a slide, presentation I gave the City Council, which actually is going to go hand in hand with what you're working on. And third, review just a few of the key supporting subjects in the related packet that I'm sharing. But I'd like to start with a story. My land partner in Town Center, Richard Berg, he's lived here since 1968, and he's just an awesome guy, and he has a few fundamental, basic statements he makes every now and then that just knocks my socks off. Several years ago, he said to me, sex without love will not last. Love without sex will not last. How does that apply in any way to what's happening here? Here's the way I see it. Having aspiration and, and, you know, vision and dreams that, as have been talked about here, can't work unless there's the numbers and the facts and all the objectivity. And the same, the opposite is exactly true. All the numbers and the facts and the objectivity, which I've been talking about in terms of figuring out what's the right mix for housing over time, my side is on, on the numbers and the facts, has to be there, but so does, it won't last unless there's a strong vision and aspiration. So I think the opportunity is to mix a short, mid, and long-term vision with all the facts on what's wanted and needed over time, and mix the two sets to have success. So the slideshow I gave the City Council a week ago Tuesday was discussing optimizing land uses within Samamish for better livability over time. And I started with a story about Harry Shedd at a Citizens for Samamish meeting a couple of months ago, that he did something really contrary. It was super. Harry said, what are all the positives? I don't want to hear a single negative. I want to know what are the positives in Samamish? It was an awesome meeting, because people couldn't talk about traffic and trees and growth and all this stuff. We, we, we had to talk about what are the positives? So here's what about seven, eight people in that room came up with. It's not all exhaustive, but it was a pretty cool list of what's happened in Samamish. And over roughly 19 or 20 years, we've made the city better in a lot of ways. It's a lot better overall. Yeah, there's a few things that aren't as good, maybe traffic and a few things, but overall, you think about our infrastructures and all the ownership we have in civic building and environmental protection and stream restoration, all these things are enhanced. But there's a way to move from better into best, and that is having optimized housing land use. And the only way to get optimized housing land use is to change the comp plan, and the comp plan is what drives everything. And today, our comp plan is kept by minimizing housing. Well, I'm suggesting that that has to be optimized. And what happens when we move to optimize, which is to lessen the types of housing that we have oversupplies of across the whole city, and increase the types of housing we do not, not based on a whim, not based on a guess, based on wants and needs for all those living and working in Sammamish over cycles of life? What happens? Thousands of households can stay in the city as their lives change. Tens of thousands fewer car trips below current planning and zoning that's in place. Hundreds of millions of dollars in revenue to the city, short and long term. And the residents save 10 times that over time in lower house payments, lower cost of living, in lower-priced housing than the houses they have now when they stay over time. Hundreds of thousands of hours saved for the people in the city. Millions fewer square feet of impervious surface. Hundreds of acres preserved for open space. Critical mass for suitable transit and enduring improvement to our community character. So the Housing Strategy Plan was based on a comp plan that basically minimized housing. The comp plan needs going to, you know, Commissioner O'Farrell's request, what's next? The city has to recognize that it's time to plan for housing supplies to optimally meet needs and wants of people over time and change the comp plan. That's what sets everything free. And it affects every land use plan we have, not just the Housing Strategy Plan. It affects everything. So Sammamish today is way better than it was in 1999. But optimizing housing in the comp plan will make Sammamish way better than it is now, which will sustainably improve livability, lifestyles, and experiences over recurring 80-year cycles of life. And that is the game. It's not 20-year comp plan horizon. It's what does the community look like for all those living and working in the city over cycles of life that recur for everyone here? I don't have time to go over the supplemental stuff in here, but all that is stapled here supports the number side. So I think it's time to mix and combine the numbers, the facts, and optimizing housing with an awesome vision for the city, and use the overall power of those things combined to make it so. That's my comment.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Bill Way. No? Okay. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Mary? Oh, how about Mary, then James?
Is it possible you could put up Jane and Eric's presentation again, that I could click through and make some comments? My name's Mary Victor. I live at 408208th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. I will let you know, I lived in Holland for three years. My husband is Swedish. We were ex-Patriots there. We had one car, bikes, went to the store to get fresh vegetables every day. In Holland, you can drive those little smart cars on all the bike routes, because you can only go 20 kilometers per hour. And we used public transit, and my son took a shared van ride to his kindergarten and preschool. So it does happen. I, at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, I had 30 maps, and I met with five of seven council members for two hours each on the maps, because I really think, we always need to know, you are here. What's around you, and where are you going? And Jane had asked me first and talked with me, and a lot of the maps that she's done actually are traced off of real city maps. They're not Mary's maps, they're city maps. And I just wanted to speak to some of them, kind of show. Can you go to the first, back up to the first slide? So Jane went and incorporated the comprehensive plan on the side, if you can view this online later. So this is the current zoning map from the city. And if you see the bright yellow, that's R4. That's four residential houses per acre. And then the R1 is the light yellow. You can see kind of big gap areas with that. And then R6 is a little bit different, lighter yellow. But if you look, the whole city really is just one sort of mapping. So it's, we do need Town Center, and what Jane and Eric are talking about is very complimentary with it. Town Center kind of needs to be in that center multicolored area. And we kind of need to have a wagon wheel or a compass rose that people can get to Town Center, not by driving all the time, that you could walk from this direction, you could walk from this direction, you could walk from this. And I think we really need to think about that as we grow. And also, everything we talked about tonight is compatible with the city's currently talking about. Right now, there's two zoning things, that if you want a zoning change, you have to go through them. They're exactly the same. There should be like a more high-level one, and then a more detailed one. So I hope that we'll get there. Can you go to the next slide, please? I compliment Jane on the 1984 one. I hadn't seen that one. You can really see here, the right half is very green. And then the 2016, that's off the current map. We're about 85% developed. That means there's about 15% of available land left. And the full build-out conditions, if we just keep going the way we're going, because based on the yellow map, everything's going to be R4, R6, and you're just going to see everybody selling, building their house, building the bigger house. And when you get those bigger houses, they don't have one car. They have the kids and the teenagers, and they end up with five cars. So it doesn't really get us out of anything. So I thought this was a great comparison. So go to the next slide, please. So Jane had actually started with the wetlands, which are green, and the waterways, because you can't live in those or go through those. And also, a lot of the wildlife corridors are in there. But what really sold me on what she was doing is the next slide, which she calls "green linkages." That's where she enhanced all those. And if you go to the parks meetings, you'll hear about them talking about land acquisition and easements and connectivity. And as you know, most of our roads go north-south, and the lakes go north-south, like Lake Sammamish does, and Lake Washington and Puget Sound. But if you look here, most of the green goes east-west, and those are the types of connections that we need to get. So those are areas where wildlife can go. And then you can actually overlay this. So in my 30 maps, I have a utilities map, because on utilities, you can't plant a lot of trees and stuff, because it hurts the utilities and they don't work well. And you want to be able to walk along those. And then I also, there's one with about 350 stormwater ponds. And wildlife already connects through to those, and it would seem that people could too. So there are multiple layers, and Jane's done a really excellent job at taking my 30 maps and simplifying it down to two or three or four or five maps for a single vision. So, oh, and also that, so the dashed line around, which is kind of reddish, I believe that's actually the Emerald Necklace. And you can see it goes not only below Sammamish, but into Isiqua below, and it goes all the way around. Next slide, please. So she just did the steep slopes and critical areas. There's geohouses. We were talking about how many to overlay, and because we're staying conceptually higher, we didn't really go into the detail with those. So next slide, please. When we did common space, if you look, you can see a lot of the parks are on the right half, where it's more developed, but there's a lot of white on the left. And that's why it's really hard. You need to get the east-west connectivity going. So I think some of the green linkages was a way for those to get connected together, because all the shaded areas shown, there are golf courses, there are homeowners associations, there are parks that are existing either in the city or next to it in King County and other areas. Next slide, please. And then the historic sites. When people first came to live, you had a well, or you used to get your water out of the creek, or you used to bucket from the lake a long time ago. So you'll see a lot of the original development is along the west shores of Sammamish, where most of the stormwater runs down to, or it was around Pine Lake or Beaver Lake. And so one of the other maps I have is the water and sewer districts. Pine Lake originally, I think, had 42 people that started the first water district, because instead of everybody having individual wells, they wanted to have a central municipal water organization. So that was how King County District 82, which is now Sammamish Plateau Water District, was formed. And then Sahali, where the golf course is on the north, that was the first sewer system. And then the sewer kind of got sold. Heritage Hills, where like former mayor and council member Tom Odell lives, that actually was named Sahali Hills 2, and it got named Heritage Hills, because Sahali said, "We just really want to use the name for the golf course. We don't want it to be for the other ones." But on the map that I use, the whole northern part of this city, I think there's only been four lots of new development, because it's really built out. They have the services there, and everybody's built out. So I want to speak to Mark Baughman's challenge question. What do you do for people with no growth? Even if we didn't have any more growth, there are areas that are developed, but there may be two houses on an R4 area, and they're going to redevelop, and what are they going to do? And if everybody just sells to build the next biggest house and doesn't do ADUs or accessory dwelling units or detached additional dwelling units, you just end up with more of the same, and we already have too many big houses. So by looking at the maps, we can figure out what to do, where to do it. And I think this sub-area plan is a really good way of looking at it. It was very complimentary of what I was trying to do on my own. So appreciate all the work and presentations and all the meetings that you've had to try to get your message out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Eastman?
James Eastman, 196th Avenue Northeast. I really like what you guys did. I think it's great. I encourage you to keep going. Just got to keep going with this. When you guys were talking, I was trying to visualize what this would look like, and I kept ending up in Europe, in Paris, going to the bakery and getting some croissants instead of popsicles or whatever. Or in Florence, completely walled off the cars, no cars allowed, getting some pizza or whatever. So I guess this may be a suggestion, as if there's anywhere in the US, anywhere, that has taken some of these concepts and made them work, it'd be nice to actually see them on the screen, just so we can help sell this, or, you know, allow us to visualize what it would look like. But I think it's the way to go, and it's the right idea. And I think Mary, I don't know if you had some of those maps, but the, all the green connections, it totally makes sense. And, you know, this might be 20, 30 years out, but I think, wow, what could we do now as a city to get here? And for this whole plan to work, I think we're going to need the robust TDR program. I know I rail on it quite a bit, because it's been around forever, but we still can't use it. So if we could get that going and working, especially for citizens that actually live in Sammamish, because that's what it's going to take. You know, some of these people might own land, it's going to become a street or a greenspine or, you know, somehow, everyone in that neighborhood's got to be able to share in how that neighborhood's going to become. And the TDR program works and does that. So if we could get that going, that'd really be nice. Sammamish did a bikes, pathway, and trails plan, shoot, probably like 2002, I think. I mean, we've done a lot of work on connectivity and trails and pathways, but there hasn't been a lot that's actually happened. When I go hiking, like if you drop me off in a forest or something, or if I'm lost in a forest, you know, most people just follow a stream. And, you know, you saw like 15 streams up there. It'd be nice to actually have a path in Sammamish that follows a stream. It's pleasant, it's peaceful. So I think that's a great idea for connectivity. And as somebody, as a landowner in Sammamish, and, you know, somebody who eventually wants to develop my property, the anti-development sediment in the city, from a business standpoint, you see exactly what the code is, which is everly changing, and you know that you just want to get in and you want to get out, because the only thing you can control is whether or not you build it per code. So people just want to get in and make their money and get out. And I think we kind of force some of these developers to take that approach or that sediment with our continually, I know, emergency moratoriums and the code that's always becoming more strict and more strict. Another thing I think we could do is somehow have a character code, where it's not just black and white, you're in this box or you're in that box. It's like, okay, somehow if we can pitch character and, you know, what's it going to look like overall, maybe more directors' decisions, or, I don't know, maybe a board. You know, we haven't had a developer agreement ever in this city, I don't think. You know, Town Center's been going for 12, 13, 14 years. Well, I don't know, it's like, what, yeah, I think so. I think that's about right. So if we could maybe work on partnering with landowners or developers and, you know, giving in certain areas and having developers pay to put these trails in, or these greenspines, or this connectivity, we have, you know, these gates and all these issues that we want to solve, and we make great plans for them, but I haven't really seen much of that actually going anywhere and actually coming to fruition yet. And I think for this to happen in 20, 30, 40 years, we need to start making inroads and, you know, just little at a time, opening some of these programs up, or putting some of these trails in, or figuring out a way to get there. But I think this is a great start. You guys have done a great job. I appreciate it, and keep at it. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? No? Okay. Then that ends public comment. And is there anything that Commissioners would like to say after listening to public comment?
I would like to say thank you for your comments tonight, and I don't know if it's all right to say, I hope you will come to the council meeting and speak on December 3.
Right, I'd like to echo that. I mean, it really is kind of a grassroots, community-based thing that's kind of growing out here organically. So it'd be fun to keep shoveling the fertilizer on it and see what we can do here.
Very good.
I'd just add that I am impressed by the fact that it seems like right now, our community is bogged down in a lot of contentious arguing over sometimes small-ball stuff. And I think that if we can get people to think about the future and see a little bit of a vision that you guys have created, maybe that'll help us get out of that mire and get some excitement around what has happened in the past with the community, which is to think about what a city could look like when we first started, and how it might grow as the comp plans were developed. And now you're, you know, changing course for us a little bit more towards vision-setting. And that's exciting, particularly given the climate that we're in right now. So I think that's a great thing, and it's okay to say that, and say, you know, we need to move past, at some point, some of our current contentious, difficult issues, and think about the future and what we're going to leave behind in the city for our kids and their kids. So great job on that part of it. That's very exciting for me, at least.
Yeah, completely agree. Me too. Very good. Okay, so the next item on the agenda tonight is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
There's a motion and a second and a third and a fourth to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the meeting is adjourned at 8:21.